Hi guys, so I am interviewing a good friend of mine. We've known each other for roughly two years through our grassroots work in Washington County GOP in Oklahoma. Sir Darryl Worley, he's a native of Claremore, Oklahoma and has a very, very strong background in rural communities and professional engineering. So he worked normally for the Oklahoma State in terms of building roads and bridges and things like that. But he also worked for the city of Bartlesville and he's been in Bartlesville since 1994. So he was raised in Harmony Star and a graduate of Sequoia. Darryl began his career in ranching and carpentry before earning a bachelor's degree in becoming a professional engineer. And so he has extensive experience in road building, environmental remediation and project management. Currently, Darryl runs an engineering consulting business and lives in Bartlesville, of course, where he and his wife have been active members of the First Wesleyan Church for over 20 years. So, well, look him up, Worley for Commissioner is the website, you can Google that. And I'll put a link down below also. And so here is my interview with Darryl. Hey guys, here's another episode of Defender's Voice. I know that we kind of missed the last two weeks or so, being busy, out of town, etc. But today in the studio, I have my very good friend, Darryl Worley. And we've been working together, being active in our local politics, me on the background mostly. And Darryl is now running for the Washington County Commissioner position. That election is coming up and so we're going to have a little chit chat about all that. So welcome, Darryl.
Well, thank you, Gee Joe. It's good to be here.
Yeah, awesome. So this is our Defender's Voice podcast where we talk about Christianity intersecting with every part of a Christian's life. Whether it's politics, business, work, parenting, all of that, school, education, etc. Well, guess what? I'm assuming your interests kind of touch on every one of those from a political sense to a Christian, as a Christian. So what I would like to hear first is a little bit of your background.
Well, I was born in Claremore, Oklahoma, back when dinosaurs roamed the earth. And I grew up in the country, about halfway between Claremore and Prior. And of course, out in the rural areas, you're always affected by your county commissioner, whether they're good or they're bad. And we never had a real good one. And it's kind of always been my goal to be a county commissioner so I can be more responsive to the people than the one we had when I was growing up. But and my background, my work background's mostly in engineering and building roads and designing roads. And never designed a bridge, but I've built bridges. I didn't actually build them, but I got them built. And I just, I believe I have all qualifications necessary. In my work, I was project manager for a large construction company here in Oklahoma. And I was, while doing it, I handled million dollar budgets and brought projects in as low as we could get them so we can make more money. And then I left there and I went to work for the city of Bartlesville. And I was a project engineer there and got to do more design, learn more about design. And I got to manage projects. The nice thing about going there, you take a project from kind of conception all the way to completion. That's kind of a neat way to have a job.
So roads and bridges and things, a builder.
Yes, sir.
So is your background in the like civil engineering side of things?
Yes, I'm a registered professional engineer and I practice in civil engineering.
Okay, excellent, awesome. Did you ever work like, so does your work ever come under the Oklahoma dot or like the boundary of transportation?
When I worked as a road builder, we did a lot of Oklahoma DOT projects. That was their, that was that company's bread and butter was Oklahoma and turnpikes and things like that. Built a little new bridge over a spillway that we put in on Ten Keller. And that was a pretty good project. A lot of, that was fun. We got to do a lot of blasting using that dynamite stuff.
I do want to mention that we also have someone who works for the city who is producing the show. So Mike is here and Mike may have a couple of questions or comments to say. And I would like him to come on in whenever, Mike. And so I appreciate you being here as well. So, all right, let's continue. So you grew up in Claremore when dinosaur, no, I'm just kidding. I wouldn't do that to you. We used to go to Claremore, the only time that we used to run is my kids cannot have processed milk. So we always bought from this dairy farm out there.
Swan's Dairy, yes. I grew up on Swan's Dairy Milk.
Wow, nice. Okay, so we have a common connection.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know a lot of the swans, so.
Okay, yeah, that's one of those trips that we used to make every two weeks or so, back in the day when my daughter was little. Now, so work kind of brought you to Bartlesville, I would say?
Yes, I came to Bartlesville in 1994 to work on the National Zinc Project. And our company had the contract to remediate the dirt from around the houses. So we took, if you can believe it, we took dirt from around the houses and replaced it and put sod down in a little over a thousand houses. Wow, that was, and you know, when you take out the dirt, you're running big equipment, you gotta redo the fences and everything else. And it got to be quite the, quite the project. I started out there as a project engineer on the project. Just kind of, but at the end of the project, I was the project manager for my company.
And you're married and you have kids?
I'm married, my wife has had three kids, two of them were deceased. And but we got married in 1995. I met her, met her in Bartlesville and couldn't leave.
Hey, my wife brought us here too. So I moved from New York because she is from here. So, or she was born here. Awesome. That's wonderful. And I've met your wife once, I think, I think.
Yeah, at Calvary Chapel, one of the, yeah, some program we was having, I can't remember the guy's name that was there.
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember. I think it was when Mr. Bowers was visiting. I think it was that meeting.
Curtis Bowers, yes.
Curtis Bowers. Hey, he was right here where you're sitting. You did an interview, yeah. Should watch that on the channel as well.
I got a nice seat here.
Yeah, and we had Wendy Sterman as well?
Yeah, I saw that one.
Right, okay. So going back to, all right, so you're running right now. And I believe that you have Corey Shual and Michael Cola.
Yes, sir.
Right, opponents from the Republican side. I don't think there's any other side.
There's no Democrat, no.
Okay, what motivated you to run for county commissioner? And before you answer that too, I would like you to also tell me, what does a county commissioner do?
A county commissioner, okay, in politics, if you think a different way cities are run. You have like a strong mayor system where you have a council and a strong mayor with a strong, where the mayor is the, you know, kind of the pushing, the guiding. Instead of a city manager, you have a strong mayor. Well, in the county system in Oklahoma, you have a three member board that kind of acts as the strong mayor. They are the, in charge of all the, you know, they work on the budgets, they, all the property is managed through them. If there's going to be a bond issue, it has to be initiated by them. Okay. The, of course, they take care of roads and bridges in the county. So each, each, there's three commissioners and each one of them has like a third of the county.
Okay.
So.
So you're saying three commissioners just for one county?
Every county in Oklahoma has three commissioners.
Okay, okay.
It'd make a difference if it's Washington County or Oklahoma County, there's three commissioners.
You know, I didn't mention to you that I'm going to ask a lot of dumb questions because I'm not from here and so I have.
You and me have had that discussion in the past.
Hey, I don't know what it is. It has two blends to it. One is ignorance and the other is a brand.
Yeah, yeah. You've kind of made that your brand, Gee Joe.
So because I'm not from here, how did this position come up as?
The current commissioner decided not to run. He's done a good job. I'm not bad mouthing him or anything. But he just decided not to run, wants to, you know, take a little more time. His name's Michael Bouvier.
Okay.
And when he was not going to run, it's hard to unseat an incumbent, but you know, but when he wasn't running, somebody had to. I decided that as a part of the grassroots Republicans, we needed a grassroots Republican as a commissioner. So that's why I run.
And are you friends with him?
Well, it's like friends, but we know each other, we speak. And matter of fact, I have a, in my home, once a month, we have a prayer meeting. And it's specifically to pray for our elected officials.
I know that.
And I've been, for years, I've been inviting him, but you know, he's pretty busy, so he's never showed up.
Yeah, you're being very nice though. What about the other two? Do you know them?
I know Mike Dunlap pretty well.
Okay.
I'm not so familiar with Mitch Annal. I do know him, I know him, I've seen him, but I'm not, you know, he probably doesn't know me.
Okay, but you guys have to work together and with the city and all other cities in the county.
With all the cities.
Yeah.
But you know, our responsibility or focus is outside the city. It's not in any of the cities.
Okay, okay.
But.
And you also work with the state representatives, all the senators and the member of the.
Well, everybody, you know, in politics, you have to work together. So, but you know, but you don't actually interact with them much. But you let them know how you feel and what you'd like, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, so tell me now, what really motivated you to jump in the race?
Well, I wanted, I've always wanted to be county commissioner. So I took that opportunity with no incumbent leaving and to jump in.
Not the governor, not the president of the United States. The dream was county commissioner.
That's right. That's my, that was my only position, elected position I ever wanted to hold was to be county commissioner.
Okay, that is very interesting. And you said, you also mentioned, okay, you're qualified in the way, because of the budget that you managed, working for the city. And also, have you ever ran for office before?
Well, several years ago, I put my name on the ballot for school board.
Yeah.
And I was actually running against Charlie Daniels.
Okay.
And, and you know, I didn't really campaign. I put my name on the ballot. I didn't go out and campaign very hard. Or I didn't go out and campaign at all. But me and Charlie got together and said, this is going to be fun. It's the battle between the country music stars. Because at the time, Darryl Worley was a, had a big song that was on all the radios all the time.
What is that about?
Well, the one he had was.
Oh, there is another Darryl Worley?
Yeah, there's a country music star named Darryl Worley.
I did not, yeah, I told you, I'm not really from here. I am not from here, Darryl.
I always said, he got the voice and I got the looks.
Ah, that makes sense. But I haven't heard you sing, so I can't judge on that yet.
Trust me, you don't want me to, Gee Joe.
Okay, let's jump into, so it's 2024, election year, lots of emotions and all sorts of things going on. Social media is buzzing with stuff, both parties. Now, we're in a unique position in Oklahoma because it's one of the reddest states in the country. And a lot of our fights, almost seems, between more institutional side of things to the grassroots. Yeah. Though everybody liked to, everybody that I know in the right wing Republican Party like to identify themselves as grassroots. But there is still a division or divide, a contrast between true grassroots versus not.
Well, the true grassroots believe that all the power comes from the people. And it bubbles up, whereas the other wing of the Republican Party believes that the, the power trickles down.
Yeah.
So that's how I do the difference.
So it's a delegation, the God, because you and I believe in a God.
Yes, sir.
And not in a God, the God of the universe. And we have been given certain rights as people on the planet. And then we delegate those rights to the government officials.
That's right. That's very, that's very correct, yeah. The, all rights come from God. And the government is supposed to try to protect those rights, those God given rights.
Yeah.
Which sometimes they don't do a real good job. And that's another reason I'm wanting to jump in is I want to make sure that anything comes down that's going to do anything to harm those God given rights, I have a voice in.
So arithmetically, medically speaking, I can't even pronounce the name, so I'm not from here, the number. When it comes, when it comes to numbers, sometimes, would mean 99% of the time, they don't represent the people.
Yeah, you're probably right. You may be a little strong on the 99%, but you're probably pretty close. No, no, like 95.
95, yeah, okay. Okay, so tell me, how, what do you think are the key issues that you observed in Washington County? And how are you going to address them?
Well, like I said, I think Mike Bouvier has done a good job and a lot of the things have not come up that I'm looking, think, think it's going to come down from Worsted and Oklahoma City. That, you know, that we need someone ready to be, no, we don't want to do that and be vocal about it and in a position to say that. For one thing, I don't know if you've ever heard of the 30 by 30 program. Where the government, our federal government, wants to take 30% of our land and put it in a conservation easement. Well, you take 30%, you take, it's already like 9% of our land in there. If you take another 20% in, who's going to produce the food?
Yeah.
That's, you're taking food off people's tables, so.
Well, they can always import the Chinese and others to do it, right?
Yeah, I guess we can bring in food from China. What are they going to eat though?
Well, you bring foreign workers to do the land. Is that what the federal deal is? Why do they want this land?
Just to put it in conservation easement so we could quit having global warming or global climate change or whatever they're calling it today.
So on the flat lands of Oklahoma, less cows will be farmed?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
That's, that's their idea, yes, sir.
It's a government gas reduction program.
Right, right.
Wow. Now, we've heard about the 30 by 30 and obviously we heard Ms. Ramonello, is that who you pronounce her name?
I think that's folks.
It's folks. Yeah, I can't remember. I'm really not.
Well, the Romanello, she's probably not from around here either.
Yeah, I don't know where she's from. Well, she's supposed to be on the show as well. In fact, we're still, I'm going to reach back out to her so she can dive into a bit of this. But do we have really official, official things come out of the federal government that says, this is what we're doing?
If there is an executive order that's been written, and I couldn't give you the number, but it's been written and that's their goal. Is by 2030, 30% of the land will be in conservation easement.
Okay, and your position as a county commissioner and working with other county commissioners in the state of Oklahoma would be, would that be called as the first level of barrier?
Right, okay, that would be, you know, throw up any roadblock you can to keep them from doing that. So whether it's, you know, low limit of a bridge for keeping from building something or anything, it's, you know, put up barriers for stop that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how, you know, they acquire land. For example, we do already know that there has been quite a bit of land that's been acquired by foreign entities, whether individuals or companies that are coming in and doing that type of work. How would you, as a county commissioner, can intervene into a deal like that?
I'm not sure, truthfully, I'm not exactly sure how you could intervene, but I would try to do whatever I could to stop that. You know, I'm pretty much a libertarian. Unless there's some reason that the government needs to be involved, I don't think the government should be involved.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So even for, you know, someone purchasing land, if someone wanted to come and give you three times what this, your property is worth, shouldn't you be allowed to do that?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, but, but the, but the deeper question is, can that be foreign entities? I mean, if a foreign entity has enough money, well, say 30% over the normal, whatever normal is, can they buy up the rest of the country? If it is for sale, I mean, is America for sale?
I'm afraid that at this moment, it probably is. So, but you know, and I'm not sure how much a county commissioner could do to stop it. But I would do all I could to keep ownership of the land in the hands of, not, not China.
Right, yeah. Do you think that they're, the land that they're really interested in is, belonged to the farmers today? Or is it not even that, the 30%?
It wouldn't be conservation, they're wanting to stop global climate change, global warming or whatever. So they're wanting to put it in easement and take it out of production.
Right, right.
So, yeah, it's mostly, it's going to be mostly farmers or ranchers.
Gotcha. And that's happening globally, isn't it? Because, you know, you see that in Germany, Netherlands, Belgium, all the parts in France. You know, I've been communicating with some of those guys on, I mean, not communicating as in just interacting with them on Twitter or X.
Right.
And they're all kind of quite worried about it. So there is that, this global thing happening. Are you involved at all in terms of talking to anybody foreign?
I've not talked to anybody outside of the country. I've not talked to anybody outside the county, really.
So as far as very key issues are concerned, I know that your best predecessor, who's still in office right now, have done a good job, whatever that equates to. I don't know what that means. What about your current opponents in the race? What are their positions? Do you know where they stand on things and how you would be different or better?
I, I've not communicated, I've not really looked at any of their campaign materials. I, you know, I've listened to a couple of the interviews by Michael Cola, but I, he didn't really say what he would do in there either. He just keep on doing the same thing. And my, where I would stand out different is, I'd always, you know, the property rights, you know?
Yeah.
If it comes down to, I don't believe in zoning laws for the most part.
Sure.
That, you know, I don't believe that you should be able to do something to harm your neighbor.
Yeah.
And that's what zoning laws really are. But there's other avenues to fix that, you know, that's the court system.
Sure, yeah.
The court system should fix that, not, not some government, right?
There should not be the arbitrator of a lot of things, but they are getting in more and more and more and more.
That's correct.
Whether it's city or county, state, federal, they're everywhere.
That's right.
Okay, okay. Can you share like specific policy initiative, anything that you have thought about that you would go in and make a difference, make a change that you have observed? Now, I know that you want to be respectful of who is in office today. But still, if someone is running, it's not just because there is a vacancy. There's always that confidence of, you know, a participant of this race that says, I can do better in these areas because of X, Y, and Z. Whether it's your experience or your beliefs, etc. Can you go into any one of those ideas?
Well, I believe, I believe that our 2020 election was not on the up and up. And I believe that the, I believe the county commissioners could have a say in how those elections are covered or worked on in the future. And if it comes to vote, I would always vote to, to do away with any vote, any machines. We can count our votes by hand and keep the ballots and make sure that they're, everything's on the up and up.
Just like how we did at the state convention.
Like we did at the state convention and, and like we did it for 150 years before they invented the voting machines.
Right, yeah. And I know that there is a lot of conversation about that. Would that be a state level mandate of some sort? How do we get rid of that? I mean, how did it even come to be? Who approved it?
I think, I think it's, there was a state level mandate. And I think in Oklahoma, I think all the counties use the same machines. Like some other states, you see them using different kinds of machines, but I think it's all the same machine in Oklahoma. And if, if those companies won't give you any code to tell you, so you can go in and see how they work.
Yeah.
What are they hiding? I mean, I understand there's trade secrets. I understand that. But you know, they can, they can kind of protect those, but you need to be able to look inside that machine and see how it's working. Make sure it's not connected to internet or not, can't, can't be connected to the internet.
But you, you and I know very well that electronics and code can manipulate things.
That's correct, yes.
There is no doubt about it.
Well, we have an experience with that in one of our local Republican elections.
Like say roughly around what, two years ago?
Oh, roughly two years ago, we had an election and somehow the code in that program that was counting the votes was just not quite right. So I'm not going to say there was any, any fairness involved, but some strange reason, the wrong guy had the top votes that didn't get the top votes.
Yeah, but the grassroots stood up.
The grassroots stood up and we, we held our ground and, and made it right, so.
And so obviously, coming back to not just the, I mean, it is mostly county politics, but it also spills a bit into the city side of things. Where there's a contention between these two parties within the same party, if I may say.
Right.
And it has to do with what we call the establishment side of things. Or to even go to the length of some maybe addressed as rhinos.
Yeah.
Do you want to share any of your wisdom on that divide?
I really, I mean, if we can, cannot, I don't want to be calling any names or calling people. I I I really, I mean, if we can cannot, I don't wanna be calling any names and calling people rhinos. Although we have some, but I just, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the be the candidate that called everybody rhino, so.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know. I'm just saying that if you have any insight into why is that even happening?
Alright, let let me go, let me back up here a little bit. The reason I got involved a couple of years ago was the election. The twenty twenty election wasn't right. And then we also, um I ordered to make an R after your name. Actually mean something, that if you put an R after your name, you are going to follow the party platform. As best you can.
Yeah, the conformity, even though the party platform itself can take some work still. Conformity to the party platform is number one, not taking things to your hands or the lobby. Part of the politics. I mean, that's what, you know, Wendy Serman is running on, is that no lobby money.
And trust me, I'm not getting any lobby money.
You're not? Oh, man, okay.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know where those people meet those lobbyists at.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't know if Mike has an idea where lobby guys come up and.
I I don't wanna get in trouble.
You don't wanna get in trouble, okay, alright, that's fine.
No, that that'll just open up a whole can of worms.
I mean, you and your wife, for example, uh Daryl, is involved, or you're mostly involved. I I see you in every meeting and we. Get to talk a little bit, and uh you're part of uh Washington County, you're part of Executive Committee as well, right?
The executive committee, I'm not on the executive, I'm on the county committee.
County committee.
I'm not one of you insiders.
Not the inner circle? Between the outer circle a little bit? Okay, uh well, I really enjoyed talking to you and working with you on several of these things. How do you uh plan to, if you're elected, we hope that, fingers crossed, that's that's. When you're elected, that's the correct way to say it. When you're elected, how do you plan to engage with the local community? And their decision-making process, especially, especially the ones who are probably not in favor but are in power?
Could you?
In favor of your candidacy, for example?
I will treat them like a, like a Christian brother if they're Christians, so, yeah, I I I won't have any hard feelings. Hope they don't have any hard feelings to me. Now, if you get, if you win, you you don't, you don't uh stone your enemy, your candidates. It's it's just a race. Yeah, you gotta remember, it's just a race. It's not like we're gonna kill each other.
I I know you like listen to some of what uh, uh what's his name, Michael Cola has said. Um and I never heard the name Corey, I have no idea. I mean, have you met him or?
I haven't met him. I think there's a Republican event next month, I'll I'll get to meet him.
Okay, is it gonna be a debate?
Well, I think it's gonna be a debate. I think that's what they're gonna call it. I think they're gonna ask us some questions or something, so.
Sure, right, and okay.
Representatives gonna emcee it.
Okay, yeah, I got you. Oh, so is that a few, um I just wanted to see how you might be, I mean, I understand where you're coming from. Where you always wanted to be a county commissioner, um but I wanted to see how you would contrast towards their policies. But I guess that's when we are going to see more of what that may look like.
I can't tell you how I'm gonna contrast if I, you know, if I don't know what their, what their positions are, I mean. All I know is I'm gonna be for the individual. At any, any, any choice, I'm gonna, you know, first thing, is it biblical? Next thing, is it constitutional from the US standpoint? Is it state constitutional? And is it right?
Yeah, okay, awesome. Are there anything else that you wanna talk about?
Nah, I can't think of anything right now, G Joe.
You covered everything?
I think so.
What about Mike? What kind of questions do you have for?
Well, two questions, um does the county commissioner have anything to do with the roads?
The county roads, yes.
What the heck are you gonna do to fix them? I'm just saying, the the county roads and outside of the blacktop is just awful. And it just tears up your trucks and your cars.
I had a good friend ask me that question yesterday. And what 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 we'll do is we will put the roads on a grading schedule. To the, all the gravel roads on a grading schedule.
Cause I I I tell you, um so I work up in Kansas and they do that and. Those backroads are are better than like Adam Boulevard or Frank Phillips and. It's smooth as glass, even though it's gravel, I'm just like, why can't we do that? And like, as it, and the reason why I bring that up is just because it just beats up on our vehicles and that costs money. You know, so it's costing everybody money at that point, you know, and I was just, I was just curious what your thoughts were on that, yeah.
I I didn't have a good answer for my friend yesterday, but I've since thought about it. And we will put it on a regular, you know, schedule. We'll figure out, I'll go with the people at the county barn and. We'll figure out a schedule and get it done, try to get it done at least quarterly, so.
Yeah, okay. So like, wh- where does the budget for that come from? The county has its own budget? The city has its budget, somewhere they intersect in some ways?
It comes, it, well, both the city and county have ad valorem taxes. And the county has a sales tax, but I don't think any of that, I think that goes to operation, I don't think it goes to actual roads. The the roads come from the ad valorem taxes. And this, but the city hasn't, but you know, I I don't think the county has any bonds that they're working on right now. They would like for the city to to not sell bonds, so they could sell some bonds. You know, taxes, you know, ad valorem taxes is high. I mean, I don't like paying like three thousand dollars a year for taxes either.
Nobody likes those. But we gotta put to good use if it is being taken and not the.
Right. I mean, taxes is a kind of a necessary evil, but we try to keep them as low as possible.
I mean, I was just gonna say, the way I look at it, and I think a lot of people can agree, is I don't mind paying taxes if it's not wasted. You know, like if if you're have a, you know, heck, even a fifty percent efficiency rating, so to speak. With my taxes, I'll be happy, because as far as I see it, the government in general, whether it be state, local, federal. I mean, they're probably only putting one percent of my tax dollars to work and that just. Irks me.
I I heard the numbers is that uh it's only thirty cents a dollar is actually being converted into something.
Actually getting to that road grader going down the road?
Seventy seventy cents, so meaning seventy percent loss. In terms of how government runs. Now, that is not unusual around the world, unfortunately. But I don't know if some European countries like Scandinavia and countries figured it out better, I I don't think so. But also, there's a lot of corporations who run just about the same. Uh but governments are usually the worst, so that's what I heard last, seventy to thirty, you know, seventy percent loss.
That sounds about right. I I would guess that's probably a pretty good number.
Okay, well, um I don't know if you have other, any other questions?
No, not at the moment, but I'm sure uh in the future, we could probably um. Do a follow-up if anything changes and.
Sounds good. Well, I really appreciate you coming, Daryl, and we, you know, we pray that everything goes wonderfully in our favor. To the grassroots and to have you as a grassroots represented, representing us. Um so I I look forward to all of that and look forward to continue to work with you. And thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Awesome. Alright. There you go.